Because my rec boss, Kirk Gerger, who works for the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, is in Texas on vacation. He planned to be here when the snow fell, but he apologizes to all of you. This work is part of the Gateway City Parks Program, and it's under the leadership of Secretary Beaton. And this is also a part of the work that Governor Baker has with the Lynn Way team. So we have an awful lot of eyes on this, but the most important eyes are yours. And I have been, my firm has been very, very helped out by a number of city councilors, one of whom is now a state representative, Mr. Capuano, whose district this was. And he is so knowledgeable about the area, and he's told me where his fish is, where there's pollution. He's just been great. And Jay also has been very helpful with it. So we're, we have given you all a long report. I'm sure you've read it in detail, and you have lots of comments for us. We have about a 10-minute presentation. And then Dave Andrews, who is with my office at Brown Richardson Row, will give the presentation, then we'll take your questions. We're very grateful to be here and having you listen to us, and we appreciate it. So this is Dave Andrews, and Althea Northcross is in the back, and the two of them have been the prime movers on this report.
Hello, and thanks again for allowing us to come tonight to talk to you about the project. Just a quick rundown. The project was set up through the Gateway City Parks Program, so it prepared for the city of Lynn itself and DCR as another member who owns two parks on the waterfront, and also the EDIC of Lynn. The design team was ourselves, Brown Richardson Row, and the Standing Engineering, as well as Woods Hole Group. So we have a really brief overview. We sent through, the last time, before we didn't come last time when the snow was gone, we sent through the full reports. It shows a lot of information in there, and we'll give you a really brief overview just tonight. We've been working on this for about a year and a half. In that time, we've produced that master plan report. We've had comments from the city, state, the state itself, and also DCR. And the report we sent to you represents the latest version of it. And we are looking to give you this overview and collect any additional comments you all have on it before we go to our final public meeting, which is going to be scheduled for late winter, early spring this year. Before we go to there, we want to collect any final comments or questions you all have on it. And then the plan is, we understand, that after the public meeting, you will vote to whether to approve the plan. Just a little background. So there's an existing waterfront master plan, preparing for the eight, as well as a municipal harbor plan that was prepared for the 10. They're in need of updating, as they're almost 10 years old. And the development context has changed quite a bit since that time. We're also, this is unique in the sense that it's an open space master plan, and so we're locating parks, promenade, and plazas along the waterfront, around which all the development will be located. So it's the framework for that future development. And there's a unique chance now with this approach to really provide good quality public access to the waterfront in places where there currently is not access. Also, it gives, you know, a chance for the city to guide and shape the type of development you want to have on the waterfront. There's also significant coastal erosion happening, and that needs to be addressed as part of this process. And to date, we've held three public meetings, large format meetings. We've had two different sidewalks at four locations on the waterfront, many of which of you are here tonight, been there, as well as bilingual survey and other relevant stakeholders, be it state regulatory bodies like CZM and DEP, or Lynn Chamber of Commerce, Mayor's Office, EDIC, et cetera. So this picture gives a good image of what we're dealing with for a good portion of the waterfront. The, you know, infrastructure deterioration, erosion of land, you know, beginning to threaten private and public land parcels, but also really fantastic views out over the waterfront, representing really great opportunity. And much of the waterfront has a feeling of being unclaimed, so there's great opportunity in that. The major idea of the waterfront is to locate a series of destinations, strategic points of the waterfront, of which are all connected back through public city streets or pedestrian connections, back into the fabric of the city. And each of those destinations are connected by continuous promenade from General Edwards Bridge up to the Haunt Causeway. Through the public engagement, we learned about what people want to do on the waterfront. And so we came up with a program of activities to sort of to locate where different activities should be located in the entire waterfront. And the idea is that the activities are distributed, so the whole waterfront acts as a, works cohesively. But also, each destination has a range of activities in order to attract a range of people at different times of day and keep them coming back and make it interesting. The coastal failure, coastal edge failure is significant in a lot of areas, requiring the actual sea wall or sea edge to be rebuilt in some cases, particularly the southern end. When we're rebuilding, we're going to use the data that was collected by Woods Hole Group, who was on our team, who had wave monitors out in the Saugus River, near the South Harbor Fishing Pier, and also made projections going forward of how the sea level is rising from old data and what they project going into the future. And we, where we have to rebuild this wall, the proposal is to raise the height of it. And we need to, and in the report, we go into detail about how we came to that decision and what elevation it might be built to. The idea is, this report is, it gives the history and the context of that all this master plan fits within, on back of previous master plans that have been done. But it provides a new vision based on all this work of what can be done in the waterfront area, as well as provide design guidelines for future developments and implementation strategies. So the master plan proposal and design guidelines chapters, which are in that report, the intention is that they can be used as standalone documents for future permitting discussions for any developments happening in the waterfront area. And these guidelines that we've done provide detailed standards for the promenade itself, including the materials, the widths, you know, the alignment, where it should be located, as well as public parks and plazas, site furniture, lighting, and the nature of the physical street and pedestrian connections, as well as described in the report, as well as the approach to planting. These guidelines can become enforceable by the city once they're, I guess, formalized by the municipal harbor plan amendment. And that municipal harbor plan amendment is part of, there's a different group of doing a, Paul Uteal doing a waterfront master plan for the city. And as part of their work, they are amending the municipal harbor plan. And so this open space master plan that we're doing will get brought into the fold of their more development-focused master plan and get codified by that municipal harbor plan amendment. And that's how the enforcement mechanism to require these design guidelines to be adhered to will come from. There's also, this, because this provides a bigger vision for the waterfront, there are further conversations that still need to happen after the actual document is complete. And one of those examples is discussions with National Grid, particularly for the route of the promenade. Most of the promenade goes along the water's edge. There are areas where we need to cut through their land potentially to link Marine Boulevard to Blossom Street. So those future conversations still need to happen in order to realize the vision that is set forth in the master plan. It's also important that DCR, they have some land holdings, South Harbor Fishing Pier, as well as Lynn Heritage State Park. It's important that they implement their proposals for their properties. And also, there's implementation and the management of all the whole waterfront after all this is installed is really important. So the report discusses different ideas and options for how the city might manage and implement all the pieces. And for example, it could be something like a nonprofit, like the Rose Canyon Greenway is managed in Boston. Or it could be a state or city organization, let me think, PCR, or, you know, deciding how and who's responsible for the management is an important piece. And I guess the last thing to, I guess, keep in mind is that this is going to be a sort of living document, and each of the parks and plazas and promenade will be implemented over time as each landholder develops their piece in adherence with the guidelines. So, and that gives you the real, the quick run-through of all, of the work that we've been doing. And again, we're here just to collect any additional comments you have. And if there's things after tonight, when you get a chance to dig deeper into the report, feel free to please call us or email us at the address here just to, you know, to give us further comments, so we can incorporate it. Because our next step after this is to go back to the public with the final, final document, based on every, you know, after we've collected everybody's input. And again, after that public meeting, we will, I understand, come back here for a final vote. And I guess one last piece is just so you're aware, we are currently working on redesign and construction drawings for the two DCR parcels, which is the South Harbor Linear Park and Fishing Pier, as well as Lynn Heritage State Park. We're in the early stages of that and have not held our first public meeting for it yet. That will follow soon after the completion of this master plan. So with that, I'll leave it. If you have any questions.
We're here to, we're here to answer all your questions.
How you doing? So these guidelines for the different property sites that are there for what the waterfront will look like, is this above and beyond the Chapter 91 requirements? Or is this something that's meshed with the 91 requirements?
It's meshed with it. The open space that we're envisioning with the promenades and the parks may be something that Chapter 91 may have been part of this process. And they may mitigate inco development. They've been working with us to make sure that their development has the same components that we have.
The concern that I have is just, I've read up a little bit about Chapter 91 and the Boston waterfront especially. There were some reports done by Northeastern University about enforcement of 91 regulations and lack thereof, just trying to make sure that what we have here is either enforceable or it's, you know, going to actually work that way and making sure the requirements of the landowners is going to be posted or whatever it may be with 91.
And I think we have been working, because we're working for the environmental, the environmental secretariat. We have been working with CZM on this. They're looking at all our seacoast data that we're getting from our different subconsultants, and so they've been very involved. I think they will be involved, I think especially right now when you all are redrawing the DPA and working on the municipal harbor plan. You've certainly got their attention in five years. I think they're very actively involved. Catherine Glenn, who is the CZM field person for the North Shore, has been on a lot of our sidewalks and has been actively involved. So I do think they will be helping the city in this.
Just know that it takes a while to get to that point with the state, and as long as these guidelines are actually working with the 91 regs, when you get to that point, that it's not going to just be for naught, right?
Yeah, right. The guidelines do prevent, provide more specifics of exactly what to provide. You know, what are the widths, you know, what are the materials? What's the street furniture? And that's not something that Chapter 91, you know, discusses. So that is where the, when this gets brought into the municipal harbor plan amendment, that is in the mechanism, like the regulatory mechanism that's envisioned that will give the city the ability to enforce this, you know, what's specifically said in this report to be delivered, and this project is being built.
Just a clarification, you mean that it would have to go through the regulatory processes? Both Chapter 91, conservation, harbor management? And then you could have piecemeal with each of these commissions or boards having input and revisions at that point? One question, the DCR property, has anybody from the city made a, how about asking DCR to give the property to the city? And then allowing the city to possibly put it out to auction?
No, I don't think you want to do that right now.
Why?
Because we just did a cost estimate, and the work that needs to be done in both places is about $22 million.
Why is that? What?
Because, because the Fishing Pier area, you know, that wooden.
South Harbor?
Yeah, at South Harbor. The edge of the water has eroded, and it's in bad shape. The Fishing Pier itself is in terrible shape. So I think you want DCR to improve things, and then maybe you should talk.
Well, what about the potential for all that land there? That's all waterfront land that's worth millions of dollars. And maybe it's time for the pier to go, I don't know. Maybe it's something as easily as eliminating that and having a hotel or condo or a 10-story marina, mixed use, whatever. But utilizing that property rather than seeing what's been going on for decades, which is really nothing.
Yeah, Nick Lein. I have a few things to note, and we will be passing back the comments that you make to DCR and to the Executive Office. I know the DCR commissioner loves to talk about that. As he says, he's got a lot of properties that he's in charge of a lot of times. He doesn't even know who he's part of. He's an engineer by training, and he's been in the position for, I think, three years. And he's doing his best to figure out exactly what they own. But when we were given a budget of $11 million to do the improvements, I said, I don't think it's going to cost as little as that. So we're now looking at a price tag of about $22 million. And that will be to fix Lynn Heritage Park and also the South Harbor and the Fishing Pier.
Just to elaborate on that, a lot of times, it's a lot easier to have a public-private partnership. And rather than letting, relying on DCR, which is typical of any municipal state agency, they just don't have the funding. So to really kickstart this, we need to really take it to another level. And let's take the land, and let's, let's put it out in inquiries, hey, what kind of development are you proposing to work in a partnership with us, the city, not with DCR? So we would have to acquire that property. And I think, I think the city would be in favor of that. I think the end result is, we're going to see action, and it's very desirable property, and we need something done there.
And I think one of the things, the reason we're doing the open spaces and the promenade is that really is setting the stage for exactly what you're talking about. Because, you know, you don't really want to go right at the edge because there's all this.
91 regulation requirements, you have to have access and all of that, which is, yeah, you'd meet that, but you could still, right.
And you want people to be able to come to it.
Rather than weeds and parking lot and disuse, disrepair, absolutely.
Well, we'll pass that on.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So Blake Donovan and Jim Cottrell appear tonight. Do you have any questions for them?
I guess I have just a clarification question. I have attended past meetings, community forums. I think one was at the Lynn Museum in a gym. Correct me if I'm wrong, is this part of that process as we move forward from what I went to previously when we talked about the boardwalk and the access to the Lynn Way site and the ferry?
And you now have two master plans going on.
I see.
You have the one that Uteal is doing with Durand and Anderson, which is looking at the municipal harbor plan, and then we call the DPA. And then you have us doing the open space. We've been working very cooperatively with that. And, you know, we're, every time we have a meeting, we call them and say how it went, and they call us when they have a meeting. So we may in fact have joint meetings in future, but it's been a very collaborative process, which is, I think, important. We don't want to have, you know, you don't want to waste your money with them redoing everything that we've done and vice versa.
Thank you.
Yeah, the idea is that they will incorporate these, the locations of the plazas and public government space and promenade into their development master plan as well, and that's what we do.
And taking the public input that you received in those forums to incorporate it?
And they're doing their own public input as well.
Yeah.
And these plans have been shown as part of, within their meetings as well.
Great.
So it's trying, even though the two projects trying to remain of this best consistency as we came between the two.
Yeah, you're trying to seem, bring them together.
And one of the things with the promenade, like we're showing, if you think about Chicago or Boston, they all have harbor walks. And that's sort of the setting for all the development that we're working on. So I think it's an important aspect of it. And I think there has been, in the public meetings that we've been at, a feeling that the public doesn't want to be excluded from this asset. We got that very clearly. And they didn't want any gates. They want it to be as open and as accessible as possible. So these are public spaces, and that's, I think, one of the things that was very important from our public meetings.
I think that, I guess the last point, maybe to your point, Wayne, earlier, is that where these open spaces are located is meant to be a land that's not deemed as developable. So it's on the landfill. It's on the first 100 or, you know, 200 feet of a waterfront edge. For example, at South Harbor, it's a narrow linear park. The Linear State Park is a state park, so it's redoing of that for them at their request. So it's not taking additional land out of the overall waterfront area, trying to use what would work or public access close to the water as we can. So facilitate a by Chapter 91, sort of come as a result of the development's requirements.
Just had one more question. How are talks with National Grid going? I don't know if that would be a question for you or Mr. Cottell, I don't know if he's here. But how are they going? I mean, a large portion of this property seems to fall into the control of National Grid.
Yeah.
Right, even the dump, if I'm correct.
Right, right.
So a lot of this hinges on what's going to happen with them. And I'm just wondering if anybody knows where that's at right now.
Well, we know a little bit. We've been working with Charter Environmental, who plan to do the landfill capping. And when they were in the very initial stages, we said to the environmental office, I, for instance, worked on Spectacle Island, which is an old garbage dump, and it's now a beautiful park. And I said, why don't, if it's possible, could you bring up the possibility of making what was promised to land the signature garden on top of the landfill? So my boss went, and the Charter Environmental guy brought it up before you. He said, we want to make it a park. So we have been working with them cooperatively. We, Dave had one meeting with National Grid. I mean, that's a little above our pay grade, really. But we're, you know, we're more than willing to meet with them and to do anything we can. I know that Dave's said on all our drawings, you know, there's some areas where we want to show.
Yeah, so here's Marine Boulevard comes down to the waterfront area, and this Blossom Street down to the area. So our, we really think it's important that promenade does not have to go back out to the line, or go back down to the waterfront. And the nearest location, we would love it for it to go along the waterfront here, but it's a liquid natural gas tank, there's a lot of complexities with that as a route. So it's a potential link between the end of their more intensive use of the transformers to link through a piece of their land and a prior land to get over to Blossom Street. So through Uteal's work, different conversations that I believe EDIC has had and the city's had, we've talked with them. We talked to one of their two union liaison officers. I let her know of this idea. I believe some members of this, maybe perhaps Jamie Marsh has talked to them as well. She should double check. She seems to be aware of this pedestrian link, so there's been initial talks with them.
Is Chip Cottell here tonight? Is he up here? Jim, has EDIC or yourself approached National Grid? And what is their thoughts on this, or what's their comments about it?
So Mayor McGee is here. There have been meetings with National Grid. National Grid has, as you had stated, excuse me, hired Charter Environmental. They are working on the capping of the landfill. They understand that this is the plan. I believe that they're on board. Not to duck your question, but I just wanted to emphasize, because I respect where you sit. And I know that you get inundated with a lot of information. And it's a part-time job, although it's really a full-time job, being a city councillor. This plan, so when it comes to waterfront development, this plan, the open space plan, the municipal harbor plan, the master waterfront plan, those three plans all converge, and they're all critical documents, all of which have to be approved by this body. It's, it's, the state will hold us to it, so it's very important. The state does not want development all along the waterfront without open space. I don't think that's what we want. This plan will have a boardwalk that will connect from the, from the bridge down to the rotary, so that people, similar to Lynn Shore Drive, right? It'll have a beautiful park space for our families to enjoy, and it will show the state exactly where, you know, the public, public space will be. It's an important document. Chapter 91 is a state permit that you talked about, Jay. But all of these plans have to be approved, okay? And so I know that you've been involved in this. I know that you're concerned about this. This is an important document. So eventually, you're going to have to vote on this.
Just the concern is, a lot of the work that's been done here, and just, I'm looking at a large portion as being National Grid again. And a lot of the time, it's very difficult to have any conversation with them. Where are we at with that?
So they're not a real estate company, right? So primarily, they own all of this land because not too long ago, there were power lines that hugged the coast, so it made sense for them. But as you know, the power lines have been moved away from the coast. The area that we're talking about for open space is really land that they don't use. Clearly, it's a landfill, you know, it's 20 acres of unused property. What we're talking about, though, is really coming up with a beautiful park space, and it's done throughout the country and other places. Why not here in Lynn? So I think that they will be a partner, they, you know. So to answer your question directly, I think that they will be a partner. Charter Environmental is on board, and they're working diligently to clean up that landfill, to cap it properly, and so that we can take it to the next step.
Thank you.
Jim, just to elaborate on that, though, I know you're not ducking the question, but is there a way to keep Charter Environmental, they're looking into how they can regulatorily comply with, you know, the desire and the wish of this plan is to have that open space along with a boardwalk. But I think what Jay's looking for is legal status. What kind of discussions are being taken place? And maybe this is a question for our legal department, that we want to have assurances down the road that they're going to work with the city, play with the city.
I can tell you that, and I'll never speak for the mayor who's sitting here, he'll kick me if I'm misspeaking, but since he has been in office, I've seen great progress with Grid. Whereas before, Grid never came to the table. And I'm being open and honest with you, Wayne. Now, in the last year, they've had, there's been more meetings with Grid than I can ever remember. They're at the table, they're committed to working with the city of Lynn. I've seen great progress. Charter has been hired and is going forward with cleaning up that landfill. So I think that we're making great progress, for the first time that I can remember.
Is it possible that we could get a report from Charter on the status of this?
I believe so, yes. I, I can ask them to come and, and meet with a subcommittee and give an update.
Yeah, that, that would be helpful.
Good idea. Yep.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
Welcome. Any more questions?
Maybe for either one of you. With the proposed boardwalk running from the rotary, say, down to the South Harbor site, would that conflict with access to the boat docks at either the Yacht Clubs or at Seaport Landing?
No, at the moment, those are private boat docks near Lynn Heritage Park. We are showing a public boardwalk, but we do not have their permission yet to incorporate their piece of it. In fact, when we visited, they asked us to do it. So, and I don't blame them, but I think that will happen over time. I have been living in Boston for about forty years. When I first came to Boston, nobody walked along the waterfront. And over the last four years, it's completely changed. I think that the marinas, especially with the plans for the upgrade of the city-owned marina this summer, I think they'll start seeing a lot of action, and they hopefully will become willing to do this.
Well, that's almost a connection. Now, it's a little further down with the Yacht Clubs.
You have to be part of the ongoing part of, as these spaces get developed and things start happening, but it's also the old portable restaurant site. It will have to have its waterfront edge as part of its Chapter 91 obligation, as well as their guidelines. You know, there's other parcels past the marinas that don't have a path, and they probably should. And, you know, and how, you know, and maybe that's a part of the role of the city to sort of look into those and really try to implement those last pieces. And the hope is that if the marina is surrounded by all the links of the old piece, you know, and that could be some time from now, maybe it's a bit different approach. You know, I know in Newburyport, there was a marina on the waterfront that allows an informal pedestrian access through it, not as amenity, but you can walk through and get to the next side and keep going. So maybe there are ways, but there's only so much we can enforce with this plan.
Okay, so.
Their current Chapter 91, I think requires that path, so.
Okay. So they're more or less grandfathered that.
So that's more of a marina.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, would you like to say?
Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you to the council president, and I'd like to address some of the questions, I think, very important questions. But I'd just like to, to say a couple of things, to I think reiterate, and maybe you can follow up. And this is, we're talking about here is the open space piece of this. So what it is doing is enhancing the value of all the properties along this whole corridor. And to try, and we're gonna be getting at least eleven million dollars of investment from the state for this corridor, and particularly in areas that are the state-owned, directly to the question related, and the grid is also involved in this. But this, this plan, I think, is an amazing plan from my perspective. There's been some great public meetings. This will be a unique, not only in the region, but I think on the East Coast, in terms of talking about sixty acres of amazing waterfront parkland that wasn't done in the South Boston waterfront. But so we're planning before we get to that, that piece. And the idea that, that the green space along this is really public land would have to be Chapter 91 land, so it wouldn't be really the land you could develop. But what it is doing is taking the private pieces that are adjacent to that, and then enhancing those, and then requiring, when the dollars haven't come from the state, that some of those developers would also be involved in helping, as their Chapter 91 investment, to create this vision, what we think, what I think, you know, is, is an amazing opportunity. When we're, we're talking about Charter, that was another question. I've met with the grid, I probably can't count the times that I've met with the grid related to this. Every time I've met with them in the past three years, we've talked about that property connection between, on either side of the, both from Blossom Street and over to the other side, so that as they're doing that development, they understand that that piece is something we expect of them. The other part of it related to Charter is that they will be, they've been very involved with moving forward, and I think it's a great question to get that information to the council on where, where that stands. But they've been working very closely with both the open space, what, a plan, the waterfront master plan, as well as, in many respects, the, the Kittleson Plan related to the bike trail that will be adjacent to this, coming down along the Linway. So all of these pieces are coming together, but this is a really unique and exciting opportunity for us to take advantage of what is a special and amazing place that we, has been really blocked off from our community. And Jay, I think you talked about it a little bit, what, what can we guarantee to make this happen? I think your, your involvement to, to ensure that this plan that we're talking about is something that we implement, because this plan implemented will set Lynn, in my opinion, ahead of the game in any other area in the region. Even if you get on to what's going on in Hingham, and we've talked about the investment of a hundred acres down there, there was no open space like this in the, in that area as well. The only thing that's similar is over in Dorchester along the Napontet River, and they took similar land and created an amazing park over there that was really similar to the landfill right here, right now. So Charter is in the process of moving forward, and, and the plan involves, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, as that land gets capped and it becomes open space for the public, there'll be a substantial increase in height, which will mean it's even more valuable in terms of what you're gonna see in terms of the access and the ability of the public to really enjoy that. So we're looking forward to working with DCR. Those dollars are available, they will make them available. So we're looking for them to make that investment. They'll be working with the private, the private-public partnership that I think you talked about, Wayne, is the landowners that sit adjacent to that, that the value of their land is gonna be substantially increased when we see this plan approved, and then we see start to some of those eleven million plus, and hopefully closer to twenty-two million dollars. But eleven million is, is a good start in an investment, both at the Heritage Park and on the other end, which will be the entranceway to the city. So there's been a lot of meetings, a lot going on, but the grid has been at the table. We're working with them closely. They understand what we expect their responsibility to be. And the other thing that's happening that's in conjunction with this, and just as importantly with the developments we're looking at on the, on the, on either side of the Linway, is the, the investment that the grid is making to bring the electric underground that's needed for those developments. That's in the process of being done, so though, that, down behind where the Garelec Farms is right now, they'll be bringing that electricity down, so that as we see these opportunities for development, the grid is, is involved in making sure that the, the power we need is gonna be on that, on those sites all along that waterfront. So I just wanted to make, get a chance to speak to all of you. I know this is something you'll be voting on, that you're very, looking very closely at. There's been a lot of great public support on this, and I think it's a great opportunity for us as a city, for you as a council, to step up and be real leaders, and, and making sure, I think, Jay, you asked the right question, how do we ensure that the plan and the vision that we see is something that we get implement, that, that is implemented, and is part of the Chapter 91, is part of the responsibility of those developments? And then working with the state, with the dollars we expect to come in, we're gonna start to make, really see this start to happen. And the Charter money is coming in field very soon, and that, that'll be probably one of the first parts of the project, that'll start to make, all of this start to be actually something that's real, not just on a drawing board, so. And I'm happy to work with all of you to get the more, and more updated information related to Charter and any other information that will be helpful to the, to all of you to make your decision as we move forward together. So thanks for the chance to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any other questions? You're all set. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.